Counselor Park. Teachers and principals, if now the rule, they still can't enforce kids to turn off their cellphones, don't use them, kids don't get caught. So even with this rule, how they even going to force it? Counselor Rodriguez.
I agree with Counselor Boden because I do know that there are lockers in schools that are not serviceable. And if you were to repair all of them, then that's just more money you're spending to repair everything just so that you don't carry your cellphone on you during school.
Counselor Nolte.
I agree with Counselor Park that it is already hard to enforce the rule that we have. And that's why I feel like this would make it, take it further and be able to make it enforceable.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Bev.
No.
No? Counselor Boden?
No.
No? Counselor Seer? No? Counselor Diaz?
No.
No? Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riley?
No.
No? Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolte?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Park?
No.
No? Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
No.
No. Motion failed.
Motion failed.
Could the clerk please read the next order?
Counselor Nolte recommends that the Lynn School Department and Lynn Teachers Union need to discuss the implementation of longer school days to improve academic performance and achievement in the Lynn Public Schools.
Well, I think it is important that the school committee does consider longer school days because they can, they have the experience to weigh out many different educational options. And that's why I said, but at the same time, I might, I might not like the thought of staying in school for longer, but I definitely think that it would be beneficial to me. And I agree, I feel like that would be beneficial to the attack we need as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Diaz?
I believe that if a student needs help, that's why teachers have after-school hours. If you need help, some kids have to work at the school, some kids do play sports. So whether they have to make school earlier or later, it just now.
Counselor Boden?
I know that there are, that English, the ROTC goes in before school. So it would cut into their practice time because some of the ROTC kids play sports after school. So both before school and after school are occupied by different extracurricular things. And I think that if you were to make it after school, it would really hurt athletic programs based on it's not too much sunlight, especially during the winter or in fall. And so I don't approve.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I agree with Counselor Boden, and I also think that making the school day longer is instead of making, being beneficial to students, it's going to be worse and it's going to cause grades to drop because these kids are actually going to participate in after-school activities and they're staying later than they have to because of a longer school day. Homework is not going to get done, kids are going to be lazy and sleepy during class, and it's not going to be beneficial to anybody at all.
Counselor Ellis?
I believe that extending a school day could prepare like high school students for a normal workday in an office because they normally work about nine to five. So that's eight hours and students are only in school for about six, six and a half hours. So it could be beneficial for just the experience of being in one place for so long. But I also understand that extracurricular activities would be difficult to perform because they would get pushed back with an extended school day and they'd be home later and they wouldn't get the recommended amount of sleep per night, which is about eight to 10 hours.
Counselor Riley?
I'm sure there are some families who need their kids to have jobs after school in order to help pay for taxes and houses and stuff and food. So, and having school pushed later will not let the kids have the jobs that they need.
Counselor Diaz?
I think if the goal is to improve academic performance, I think teachers really do that, that they stay at school and if any kid really needs help, they will have, they will go out to school for teachers. I feel like if some students have to go home after school, after work, or after sports and help their parents out or whatever they have to do, and they say, and then they have to go work, something waking up earlier or leaving school later is going to be a major beneficial.
I feel as though the main controversy over this topic is the time students have after-school for extra programs, but nowhere in the motion does it actually say how long the school days will be lengthened. So is there anything that can be clarified?
Yeah, I think it would be.
Counselor Nolte?
I think it would be reasonable to say like 45 minutes of extra time. It's not that much longer, but it still supplements the six-hour restriction. Are you ready?
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
Well, upon adding another 45 minutes, you're also adding either another class or another teacher, which means it's a particular of the to pay more money to teachers to actually give extra classes and where exactly that money is going to come from.
Counselor Nolte?
I think, well, I feel like having more classes and having more teachers would be actually better because it would be more diversified because not too many people get to take art classes or music classes or actually facilities like that. So forget your time in the school day away from like core subjects to really develop like a.
Counselor Park?
I disagree because by extending the school day, kids are taking buses home. The bus people, they're not going to spend their time or change their routes just because school got extended.
Counselor Boden? I know that I personally played baseball and some fields don't have lights. And we've come pretty close a few times to not being able to finish the game because of, because we can't see. And I think that an extra 45 minutes later in school could, could cut down on some games and it would cramp schedules. And you know, a lot of times we have to be at the field at four o'clock. And if we're going to school, an extra 45 minutes, we won't be able to get any time to warm up and everything. So.
Counselor Bev?
So I'm going to repeat like what everybody said a little bit. So yeah, the people after school, they have activities, they have jobs, they play sport, and they need to relax six or seven hours of school without any break during that time. Like it's not good. We only have like 30 minutes of break during lunch, and this is nothing. To extend school hours, like the students, we go crazy, you know? I think that we should host a poll for the students if they're free or not, like to ask them some questions about it because believe me, I've come from a country where school ends every day at 4:30 and the students are really not happy about it. They even claim to make riots against the government. So I'm not agree with that.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I agree with Counselor Bev, and also it's not only talking a part of older students, but younger students as well. Children in elementary school sometimes have to wait for parents to pick them up. The parents already have a tight schedule enough of work, they would not be able to come pick up their children. And if holds are going to be taken for the younger children, it should be given to the parents based on their work schedules.
Counselor Diaz?
So are they going to be adding more classes or helping the kids in the area that need help?
Counselor Nolte?
Well, this order is really just for the Lynn School Department and Lynn Teachers Union to discuss this like implementation of longer hours. So that is where their issues would come in because they have, they have a sense of knowledge about education. So that, that's why we're just want to get, get into their arena, but yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Bev?
I want to make an amendment, like what about just shortening the school hours, which is better.
Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment only?
Counselor Bev?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Boden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer? No? Counselor Diaz?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ellis?
No.
No. Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Field?
No.
No. Counselor Nolte?
No.
No. Counselor Park?
No.
No. Counselor Richard?
No.
No. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
No.
No. Amendment failed.
Any further discussion on the original order? Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
If the motion is just for the discussion to go into the Teachers Union and the School Department, what if the kids don't want what the union and the school department is at?
Any further discussion? May we roll call?
Counselor Bev?
No.
No. Counselor Boden? No. Counselor Seer? No. Counselor Diaz?
No.
No. Counselor Ellis?
No.
No. Counselor Riley?
No.
No. Counselor Bev?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolte?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Park?
No.
No. Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
No.
No. Motion failed. Seven, eight to three.
Could the clerk please read the next council order?
Counselor Park recommends that the DPW through the Parks and Recreation Department look into scheduling free summer activities on the Lynn Commons.
Counselor Park?
I think this is a great idea for the younger kids that probably have nothing to do other than to get into trouble. They now have something during the summertime they don't have to pay for that they can do. But I just want to know where, who would be counseling it? And would you pay those people to sit there and do activities with these kids?
Any discussion? Counselor Ellis?
I believe if someone felt strongly enough on the subject, they would volunteer personally. I, I would volunteer to sit outside and play games with children. If it gets them outside and away from technology and helps them stay fit.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I agree with the orders, but because it should be available free to children and people should volunteer, but where would the money come to actually fund all the activities that are going to be done?
Counselor Boden? What if there's small activities like, like kickball and dodgeball and stuff like that? Doesn't really need too much funding. It would just need funding for the people that are watching the kids or, you know, watching the whole operation. So I, I don't think it should take too much funding to do that unless you have like concerts or something big like that.
Counselor Park?
I think the city should want to sponsor or lend some money for kids' activities to give them something to do.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bev?
I think this is a very good idea, especially for volunteering because I think this is a great way for students to volunteer. This is also good for college to put on their transcript. And the students can have fun at the same time if they have nothing to do over the summer. They can spend time with those key, with those kids. But we should also go with the hours so those students don't have like to spend so much time volunteering so much. Like we should have that more deeply.
Counselor Park?
I'm sure if you ask local businesses, they'll be more than happy to help sponsor activities for kids because at Green Gardens, we have basketball tournaments that get sponsored by all types of companies.
Counselor Richard?
I feel as though this is a good idea because it will promote more citywide kids' activities. They wouldn't like keep kids up there on certain boards.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, about the hours, like what would the hours be if it went to, into like the nighttime? Would there be lights for the kid, for the counselors to be able to see the kids or so? Need safety too.
Counselor Park?
I think it'd be mostly daytime activities so that, because younger kids usually don't stay out late. But if, would it was necessary to get lights, I think that if you ask sponsors or ask someone to help you fund for lights, it could, something would make it work.
Counselor Diaz?
What would be the ages that it could?
Counselor Park?
I think it'd be school age. I mean, obviously 19-year-old, 20-year-old people are not going to go to these, it's basically probably some little kids, elementary, middle school, young ones, high, and high school if they want.
Counselor Boden?
Could this create a few jobs for kids that are 18 and up if that was, you know, if it was to get funded and people were able to get paid to watch with this, create jobs for young adults?
Counselor Park?
I think if the funds were there, then yes, kids would get, have, be able to have jobs and opportunities to work with young kids.
Counselor Riley?
Would kids from all different ages be together? Like would the, the first graders be with the eighth graders playing dodgeball together? Or would it be different ages together?
Counselor Park?
I think that the age would matter. Like we're not going to have first graders, like you said, play dodgeball with eighth graders. Probably age-wise, like young kids, like 10 to 12 will stay together, play their games. Then kids 13 to 16 probably play their own.
Counselor Boden? Now, would it just take place in the common because I know there's, there's kids from different, different parts of the city that may not be able to get to the common. They might have a ride, they might have money for a taxi, and that's, could be a long walk for, for some kids. Would it be in different parts of the city, in different fields, like one in English, one in classical, like with park, or would it be different?
Counselor Park?
I think that at first you should start at the commons and then, and then see how many people actually want to participate. And as it grows, move it to fields such as English, tech, classical.
Counselor Nolte?
I believe that there's already a park program in the summer. It's five weeks and it's from other parks and recreation, and there are multiple various parks throughout the city in the summer. That would be a nice addition to have the commons there too.
Any further discussion? May we roll call?
Counselor Bev?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Boden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer? Yes. Counselor Diaz?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riley?
No.
Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolte?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Park?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed. End of one.
Could the clerk please read the next council order?
Counselor Richard recommends that the summer youth program designate one day of community service for youth workers to participate in by volunteering to help the elderly work at my brother's table or volunteer and clean a park as designated by the DPW.
Counselor Richard?
I believe this would be a positive thing for you, for the workers at the camps. Really working with elderly or my brother's table does give you perspective on other people in the city of Lynn. And as an employee of one of the summer jobs, I think it wouldn't be much to ask toward a day.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? You take role?
Counselor Bev?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Boden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Diaz?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolte?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Park? Yes. Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
Could the clerk please read the next council order?
Counselor Rodriguez Rios recommends that the Lynn School Department look into the feasibility of opening the school gyms after school for students.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I believe it's a good thing that allowing kids with more to stay after school to participate in things such as like sports inside the gym and providing a certain environment, so being out on the street, doing other things. And it also encourages them to learn and help their lives, to actually want to exercise. And upon giving it to them at their own school is really going to help.
Counselor Boden?
Would there be a police officer in place and would it, would it be for just high schools? And is there a limit on the kids that can come in and how long they can stay? You know, if there's not a police officer on hand, then they could get kind of out of control.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I don't think a police officer would be necessary. These are just kids. They're not like criminals and stuff. Providing just teachers there, people who are there with them and already have a connection with them, work with them. And it would be probably only about an hour, nothing more than that because there are kids who need to get warm. Can you please restate the other two questions?
What?
Because you asked.
Oh, I said, police officer, you have that. Oh, the amount of kids that are allowed in each gym and would it just be for high schools?
No, it would not be just for high schools because that would be unfair to other grade levels of elementary and elementary, elementary, middle schools. And on, they would have to sign either, would it be just show up? And I believe the school administrators like principals or vice principals would determine how many kids could be there. They could assign days, maybe talk to the kids on what day is near, and it would actually go.
Counselor Richard?
Would it be possible to make an amendment that students could only go into the gym of their schools?
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on that? Can we have a roll for the amendment only?
Counselor Bev?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Boden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Diaz?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolte?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Park? Yes. Counselor Richard? Yes. Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
Counselor Boden? Would it be right after school, would the kids get changed in the locker rooms? And if they were to get changed in the locker rooms, there's not always enough lockers to supply for the kids. So where would they put their stuff? If there isn't enough lockers, and what happens if things are even stolen? And why, why you said they weren't going to log in, there was going to be a log, they would just show up?
No, they will log in.
Oh, they will log in. Alright, so, so would they be, would they go home and then come back and get changed because there could be, you know, if kids have problems, there could be weapons brought back? That's why I think there should be a police officer on hand. And would there be like metal detectors to see if there's, you know, anything on the kids because things can get kind of hairy sometimes?
I don't think it would be allowed to go home. It would be something right after school. A lot of kids have their own locker and would prefer to leave their belongings in their own locker rather than go to the locker room. Some kids just change in the bathroom, so I don't think that would be a problem. And for the thing of metal detectors, I mean, kids, you can't really prevent it. I mean, they could have just came to school with it. It doesn't necessarily mean that because it's an after-school activity, something bad is going to happen. It's open to kids who want to be there, not, they're just kids. I really don't think a police officer is necessary.
Counselor Park?
I think this is a good idea, but you have to remember that there are sports that practice in the gym. Like myself, I play track and we use the gym. So how would this work for people that like play basketball, practice in the gym, or do softball that throw around in the gym when it's raining out? Or for even people that do track, how would you fit all those kids in the gym when there's already the athletes that play in other school?
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
I think that coaches would be willing to not compromise, but the coaches and the directors of the people who are going to be there after school would schedule it to make it fair for everybody to be there because it's not really fair to just leave it up to the athletes to be there because you're taking away from kids who want to be there after school and want to live a little different lifestyle. So it can be scheduled around, if a basketball team needs to be there, then they could do it another day, not that day specifically.
Counselor Diaz?
I think it's hard. Me and myself being a softball player, starting of the season, we practice indoors every single day. So let's check basketball season, volleyball. So how would that work? Would they stop our practices for the kids?
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
No, they wouldn't stop their practice for the kids. And that's what I'm talking about, scheduling the event to happen when it, around the schedules of athletics.
Counselor Diaz?
So at what time would they start? Would the kids go? Because sometimes practices go even after six thirty, six thirty.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
Not all sports require the use of a gym. Neither do all schools provide, like for example, elementary school does not have a softball team. So therefore those kids should not be taken away. Obviously with the kids who are in higher grades like high school, if they need the gym, they can have the gym. But the opportunity should still be allowed for other kids to use it as well. Perhaps not on the same date, but on other dates.
Counselor Ellis?
I know when you say about scheduling the gym time, sometimes the weather is unpredictable in New England, as we all know. And say the people in the gym were scheduled to have like a Tuesday after school to hang out in the gym and do their interuel things or whatever, but the sports have a game the next day and every single sport practices if they don't have like a game or a match or whatever. Because I know I've got three games. We, we practice on Tuesdays and Thursdays and then we play all the other time. So we use as much practice as we can get to be as good as we can get to represent our schools.
Counselor Richard?
I feel as though people who play sports for their schools are put on like a higher horse than the rest of the student body. And I feel like this is a way that could really even out the favor.
Counselor Riley?
If it's basketball season, basketball's in the winter and you can't try to have your kids outside in shorts playing basketball because, well, in, all the games are outdoors anyway. So if you're having a game, you can't have people in the gym at the same time.
Counselor Rodriguez Rios?
And what they're saying about using the gym, I'm on a drill team. We practice just as much and just as hard as any other team. And yes, sometimes we're not allowed to use the gym because an athletic team has to go in and practice. And that's not fair because we compete too. You're taking away more practice time than what we do. We compromise with the coaches. If we have to go practice in the cafeteria, that's fine. We'll go practice in the cafeteria. But yes, I agree with Counsel Richard that it's not fair that athletic people get put on top because other kids, like they have to do stuff too. And if kids have to be moved to a cafeteria or to the gym, that's an alternative to scheduling things with sports.
Counselor Boden? Since you have the practice with your ROTC, this would be clashing with your time. And I know you said that you could go in the cafeteria, but you know, for, for instance, basketball practice, it's about two, two and a half hours, which, and we use every single minute of the, a lot of the time that we have. And if, if we're going into your time and the boys, boys JV, freshmen varsity, and girls JV, freshman varsity, they all have to have different, there's only so much room in the gym. So how would this, like, how would that work out? I mean, you can't really cut back on practice times for the teams because then it would bring down the level of the team play while other, while other teams are having practice for two and a half, three hours anyway. So.
Counselor Nolte?
I feel like that, like as from our perspective, we're thinking you're in like more high school kind of ways. We're all like athletes and then we have friends who are athletes. And so I feel like this would be really beneficial for younger students, especially like in middle school and in elementary school. Because in high school, there, there's so many programs, like varsity, junior varsity, even like freshman teams and stuff. So if you want to be on a sports team, then that's, you can participate in that way. But at the same time, there should be like options for you to just kind of engage and help the activities.
Counselor Diaz?
So if a student, if you made school, they would all. So if a student is in middle school, they will only use, they will school gym, or will they use another stadium?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
Each, each student would only go to the, for example, classical could not go to an English high school gym because that's not your school. Everybody stays at their respective school.
Councilor Bev?
Uh, uh, what everybody's saying is very true about practices, like the gym would be so impactful. That's why we have the YMCA, we have other gym, we have those kind of things, you know, to, to get yourself shaped. It's very important to go to the gym, you need to be strong, you need to have muscles and everything, and it's normal. And I think what we should do is that the school provide free transportation to go to the YMCA so it would be much more easier for the students to go there instead of having to ride into halls, walk there, it's far.
Councilor Richard?
Would it be possible to make another amendment and have it only affect middle school and elementary school?
Is there a second on the amendment motion?
Second.
Can I have a roll on the amendment only?
Councilor Bev?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Bowden?
No.
No, Councilor Seer?
No.
No, Councilor Diaz?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ellis?
No.
No, Councilor O'Reilly?
No.
No, Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McNulty?
No.
No, Councilor Park?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Richard?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Robbie Israel?
No.
No. Motion failed.
Is there any further discussion on the original order? Councilor Diaz?
Oh, what Councilor Bev said about the YMCA, I used to live at the YMCA. And they have after school programs, so I'm only used to the gym until five thirty. So how would that work for the kids?
Councilor O'Reilly?
With what Council McNulty said a while ago about the, it, like, for the high school being okay, with the middle and elementary school, what we said also a while ago, and like, no police officers? What if they're there with no supervision? You're gonna have the elementary school kids there, a bunch of them with no supervision, no cops or anything running around?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
When Council Bowden said, I think about being allowed police officers, I said, no, teachers would be the supervisors of the actual school activities.
Councilor Ellis?
Um, not all, well, at least the elementary, the, uh, elementary school that I went to was really small and we didn't have our own gym. We had to go to Calian for our basketball practices and whatnot. So would that, would those schools who don't have a gym be allowed to go to other schools for the use of their gym? Because it's not fair because they don't have one, they have nowhere to go.
Councilor O'Reilly?
Will these teachers be getting raises for staying after school later?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
Um, the answer, Council Ellis, we do have cafeteria. And like I said before, some teams do interchanges into cafeterias and gyms. Like, I went to a, a middle school that had no gym, our gym wasn't cafeteria. So they have a space where they can be and it's not really unfair because they can't use the cafeteria. And for, uh, Councilor O'Reilly, um, there are teachers who want to do their time already to stay after. I'm pretty sure that there are teachers who are willing to stay after about an hour or so for kids who wanna stay there and have fun with their friends or do something productive that's healthy for their lifestyle.
Councilor Ellis?
Um, on the point of sports going into the cafeteria, I know some schools are built that there is glass, like casings in the cafeterias. Like classical has a bunch of, um, glass cases where they have pictures and stuff like that. And like, say you send the softball players into the cafeteria, they can ball, break up, breaks in glass, or even like tennis or anything could be broken.
Councilor Diaz?
I honestly think this would not work for high school. High school always has sports all year round, whether it's basketball, softball, soccer, track, volleyball, whatever. But for middle school, elementary school, I think it's great. I honestly think that there should be a police officer because teachers already, already have such a long day at school. And without being paid, without, for doing how many hours they're doing already, I think there should be a police officer. And it should only be for middle school, elementary school.
Councilor Park?
Um, for high schools, I know now there's already an open gym for any high school people that wanna go hang out, play basketball. I don't know whether it's Friday or Saturday, but it's from six to nine, these are, I think, for high schools. So why interrupt the athletic programs when there's already someone operating the system for high schools to get out?
Councilor Bowden? I think I agree with the police officer because maybe some kids, like high school kids, will bring some weapons during those times, you know, now and then. So it's, it's a dangerous city, you never know. And this would make the police job more interesting too, instead of just patrolling in their cars and...
Councilor Robbie Israel?
For those of you who want police officers, you want police officers in elementary school where there really is no cause of a threat of children really bringing dangerous weapons into the school.
Councilor Diaz?
I don't, I don't believe that threats only adjust to high school. I've heard many stories, middle school accidents happening. So maybe not so much in elementary school, but I believe in your school.
Councilor Bowden?
Um, I think there should absolutely be a police officer there just based on the fact that if there was, you know, a giant brawl or something taking place, whether it be in elementary school or middle school, I think kids will think twice if there's a police officer there when half the time, kids don't enjoy listening to their teachers as it is. So what makes you think they're gonna listen to them after school anyway if they, if they're saying, don't fight that kid? But there's a man there with a taser and saying, don't fight the kid, and they ain't gonna fight him.
Yeah.
Councilor Robbie Israel?
Honestly, whether a police officer is there or not, if there is a liquid present, they don't care who's there. It could be a teacher or a police officer because that has happened where there are police officers present and they don't care. They do whatever they want anyways.
Councilor Park?
Um, so if you do put a teacher there after school, say he breaks his arm, splits his head open, or gets a serious injury, would that be brought upon the teacher? Would the teacher be fined for it?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
No, and teachers aren't trained to handle those type of situations, so I believe that they would know what to do.
Councilor Bowden? Um, if, if there was a broken bone, um, who would be responsible for it? Would the after school program be responsible for it? Would the school be, um, responsible? Would the teacher that was there be responsible? Who would have to take care of that?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
For students who would wanna participate in the after school gym program, I believe that their parents should have to sign a waiver contract stating that there is no, um, responsibility put on the parents, I mean, on the teachers because the parents are the ones who agree to let their children partake in the activity in the first place.
Councilor Diaz?
So how would the parents know that a child went to the open gym and stuff somewhere else and something happened to the kid? Which is possible?
Councilor Park?
Um, say that the parents do sign a permission slip saying that they know that their kids are going. But what if something serious does happen? They're relying on the teachers to knock with their child and, um, that's why they send them to these programs, so they don't get hurt. So what happens when they do get a serious injury?
Councilor Robbie Israel?
I don't remember what she asked, right? Oh, okay, wait, um, what she, um, to Council Diaz, what she asked? As I said before, the children who are there would be logged. If they do not come, there is obviously no responsibility held to the teachers because they were not there. They have scheduled logs, they know when to be there, and if the children do not show up, that is on the teachers. To answer, Council Park, you cannot avoid, it is inevitable to avoid an accident. So if something were to happen, as I said before, teachers are trained to deal with that type of situation. And if they're allowing their children to stay, it's that they have the confidence and the trust in teachers that they would know what to do in case of an accident. But that is not something that you can prevent.
Councilor Diaz?
So if you are a parent and you signed this permission slip, allow your student to go, you hope that your student will go instead of going somewhere else? What happens if something happens? Who's gonna be responsible, the teacher or the parents?
Council Robbie Israel?
If you as a parent trust your child to be there, you should take responsibility for your child. If they do not show up, that is on you, not on the teacher, because the teacher did not force your child to be. That is on the parent, not on the teacher.
Councilor Bev?
That's why we have the V.I.S. We don't need the school gym, we have YMCA, which is right here, and that's why we need to provide free public transportation to go there. It's much more easy than the top, so much time, like, wow!
Council Richard?
You know, like, have those free public transportation to go to YMCA.
Council Richard?
What about students that cannot afford even for the YMCA membership?
Council Diaz?
Like I said before, the, the YMCA network, the kids that go to the after school programs that are already paid to be in the after school program, use the gym from one forty-five till five thirty. So what's gonna happen to those kids that pay? There are members of YMCA, they gonna cut their gym time?
Council Park?
Um, how Council Richardson, how, when kids afford it? Um, if you go to your school nurse, they will give you a free three month pass to any YM, well, the YMCA and Lynn. If you just go and ask them, you get it for free, if there's no money involved.
Council Robbie Israel?
Um, to Council Park, the three month pass, um, can, it, it's good, but if you have it year round, already provided at your school where you do not have to be transported to another facility, I think it would be better for the students to just stay at school.
Council McNulty?
I also agree with Council Robbie Israel that it would be better to stay in school at the post going on to the YMCA because it's where your learning takes place and at the same time, it's important to fulfill community in ways that you're learning. And I agree with it.
Council Park?
What if no teachers wanna stay back? Because I know plenty of teachers that don't even live around that, they live in like, they live far away so they're not gonna wanna stay another hour to wait even longer just to get home.
Council Robbie Israel?
Not all teachers live out of state, there are teachers who live locally and who know and donate their time for children who wanna stay in school to do something productive.
Council Richard?
Would it be possible to split the motion into two? And because there doesn't seem to be any problems with elementary, middle school this plan, but we all seem to have problems with the high schools. So maybe the high school plan can be put on the table for another time.
Is there a second on that?
I have a second.
A second, also.
Can we have a roll on the option to split it into two?
Uh, Council Bev?
Yes.
Yes, Council Bowden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Council Diaz?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ellis?
Yes.
Yes, Council O'Reilly?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council McNulty?
Yes.
Yes, Council Park?
Yes.
Yes, Council Richard?
Yes.
Yes, Council Robbie Israel?
Yes.
Yes.
So is there any further discussion on the aspects, um, that pertain to the non-high school part of this? Can we have a roll on amendments?
Council Bev?
No.
No, Council Bowden?
No.
No, Council Seer?
No.
No, Council Diaz?
No.
No, Council Ellis?
Yes.
Yes, Council O'Reilly?
No.
No, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council McNulty?
Yes.
Yes, Council Park?
No.
No, Council Richard? Yes, Council Robbie Israel?
Yes.
Yes, motion failed.
Is there any further discussion on the high school aspect of the order? Because we're gonna put that on the table for another time. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, so before we recognize that motion... Any more discussion? Uh, I would like to say, uh, all of you guys and ladies did a wonderful job tonight. The thirteen of UPA, so round the clock. It's, it's nice to see, uh, students from all four high schools in the city. It's nice to see, uh, a, a city council that reflects the diversity of the city. And, uh, this is, uh, no offense to my colleagues that sit on the council now, but it is refreshing to hear the opinion of, uh, six intelligent women. Uh, since the city council is all men right now. So, uh, uh, it's, it's, I encourage everybody here to stay involved in their community, uh, stay involved in Lynn, stay involved with your education. I think the future is bright. Uh, I think you did a wonderful job tonight and I wanna thank you. So with that... Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?